Good evening, everyone, and let's call this meeting to order on this November 18th, day of 2024. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Casa Grande. The first item on our agenda is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Pastor Robert Castro from Calgary Cavalry Church to please give our invocation and please remain standing for our pledge.
Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, it's my privilege to be able to be here this evening to open this session with prayer. If you will bow your hearts with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, that we can gather here, Lord, and thank you, Lord, for each one of these members here. Lord, it seems like we're coming to an end of an era and a beginning of a new era, and some are stepping aside, Lord, who have served this city for many, many years in many different roles. Lord, I pray that you would be with each one of them that are going to be stepping down and stepping aside, and, Lord, bless them on their new ventures, what they're going to be doing. And, Lord, I pray you would be with the new members, and, Lord, be with our new mayor. But, Lord, with everything that's being discussed and with the growth of this city and with all the different things that are going on, Lord, they're going to need godly wisdom to steer through things, Lord. So I pray that you would pour that out through your Holy Spirit. Lord, we pray for all the police and fire and all the first responders in our city, Lord, that you would keep them safe and give them the ability to do what needs to be done here in our city. And, Lord, for our streets and our avenues and highways and freeway, Lord, we need more things to happen, Lord, to take care of the growth that's going on here. So we pray your hand, pray your hand of blessing on that, on decisions, on projections, and what to do with all of this. Lord, tonight, with everything that's going to be brought up, discussed, voted on, Lord, we pray for your will to be done and that this council will continue working together with wisdom from you. And we lift all of this up in the matchless name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Anthony. All right, let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
Next item is item C, our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of November the 4th, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of October the 3rd, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission meeting on October the 1st, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is our claims, D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated October 30th through November 12th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes to the agenda from staff?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Council, council members? All right, seeing no changes, then I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting agenda is approved as presented. We have no special presentation. Next is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything off the agenda? Staff, nothing. Public?
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, consent agenda is approved. Next is our public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Just as a reminder, that it's not on the agenda. If you are here for an agenda item, please wait till the public hearing, because then you can address that and we can respond to that. But this is anything that is not on the agenda. So if there's anyone here who would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. I'll open the floor and ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And again, remind you that we cannot comment back to you on your comments. Anyone? All right, seeing nobody jump up, and I don't have any speaker cards, so I'll close the floor, and we will move on to our next item, which is item I1. Scott?
Mayor McFarland, members of the council staff is here this evening asking you to approve an expanded use of an existing employment staffing agreement that we have with the company called ESI, Educational Services Incorporated, that was actually entered into back in 2022. The use of the contract as approved by the council at that time was strictly limited for the classification of city manager. We've had some additional discussions about that, and this evening we're asking for your approval to expand the use of the existing contract to include other positions beyond city manager. We have situations that come up from time to time where we would like the opportunity to consider the possibility of an employee who has, and this is on the Arizona State Retirement side, an employee who has reached the point of normal retirement, and they wish to consider continuing with the city, and we wish to continue to have them employed, to evaluate that possibility under this contract. We've been working on an administrative directive that would provide guidance in the parameters and how we might use this. And it will, it has included, or it is included, including certain factors such as, first of all, an issue of whether or not there's a reasonable opportunity to use succession planning that we have done and promote internally for that vacancy, would allow us the opportunity to evaluate the market, the competition out there, as it were, who we might be able to expect will be able to have a good recruitment for the position. And then specifically, looking at the criteria that includes past performance evaluation results on part of an existing employee, recommendation from the employees' department director, an assessment of the employee's skill sets that are present, the licenses and certifications that the employee may have, institutional knowledge of the city, that's a clear benefit to the city. And all of this would be at the sole and absolute discretion of the city manager. This is contrasted by the Deferred Retirement Option Program and Public Safety Retirement, where employees in PSPRS are able to go into the drop program and go for five years for an initial term, which is totally at their discretion. We don't have an opportunity to say no to that. That's totally at their discretion. This would be totally at the discretion of the city, of the city manager, in applying the criteria that we've identified and determined whether or not it was a good thing to do. Bottom line is, it's asking you to go ahead and rely upon the discretion and the prudent use of the contract by the city manager, who is the final authority in all matters relating to personnel policies, the city's official personnel officer, and would be able to make those assessments as they come up. Staff believes this is an important tool that we'd like to have in our tool bag to use in a very competitive job market out there, and we find it continuing to be so. It is said we're victims of our own success in the local market, of all the success we've had in recruiting industry into our community. And not only that, but the world out there, and particularly many of the cities and towns, are very aggressive in terms of their pay and benefits. And so we would really like to have this tool in our tool bag. So that's the essence of this. We've talked about it before. I think you're fairly familiar with it. And so with that, I'll simply leave it there, and between Larry and I, we'll be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Scott. Questions? Bob?
Scott, with the fact that it is solely up to the city manager, if an employee expresses a desire to go through this, and the city manager's answer is no, do they have any recourse? Is there an appeal? Is there a grievance? Is there anything, or are they limited to abiding by that answer?
The short answer is no. The fact of the matter is that it is said that anybody can sue anybody for anything. And so in a purely theoretical perspective, there might be an allegation of discriminatory treatment, but that would certainly have to be proven. And I believe that the criteria that we've established and the assessment process that we say we're going to go through and we will go through will provide adequate information to an employee and his or her attorney, who may want to pursue litigation against the city, to show that the decision was not made on any protected discriminatory basis.
And Scott, if I recall the criteria correctly, it's a checkbox of things that need to be checked. Then on top of that, the plan is to still go outside and look for other people? So this person would be considered in the normal sequence of the search process, right? I mean, it's not automatic? Am I correct, Larry?
Mayor, I think that, and I'll ask Scott to share his thoughts. From my perspective, I think we would know in advance of the position whether or not this was a position that we would be looking to have dialogue with the employer, the employer approaching us, versus there are going to be certain positions that we typically generate several applications, several candidates through a process. We probably would not ask the employer or evaluate that after we had gone through some type of a search.
Like when we sent out an engineer request and we get no response?
Well...
In that case, if we had a retiring engineer and he was, or he or she was pretty good...
We would have very likely had a dialogue in advance to doing the recruitment, but yes, maybe not the best example, because we have a very difficult time hiring engineers.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lavender.
Yeah, well, thank you, Scott, and Larry. This is a policy that's been in effect to the elementary, the high school district for years. It's a win-win policy. It's a win for the employee. It was a win for me when I retired in 2021 and came back to work for the elementary district through ESI. It's a win for the school district. It doesn't no longer have to pay the retirement rate of 12%. I think it's 7% when somebody's retired, so you're saving money there. You were able to retain staff. And quite frankly, in 2021, if this option was not available to me, I would have taken a job in the valley somewhere and left and went up there to take advantage of the opportunities up there, because there are school districts up there that would have hired me on the spot. There are cities that will hire people on the spot. We will hire retirees from Texas and other places on the spot who are avoiding the one year in Texas by moving here. So I think we saw the need when we retained the city manager reins, and I think to offer the same opportunity to other employees and be competitive is essential. So I appreciate you bringing those to us tonight.
Lisa?
Well, first of all, thank you. I know this is something that we've been talking about for years, and, you know, the initial plan or policy came through. What year was it, Scott?
The contract was, the agreement was first approved in 2022.
2022. And I know there were some concerns that I had along the way. I understand, you know, what you're talking about, Councilmember Lavender, when it comes to the education system and retaining, you know, teachers and getting people, good qualified candidates. And I do believe it's something that we need here at the city. But my concern along the way was just making sure that we're providing opportunities for our employees to be promoted and to make sure that they have opportunities to move up, and we're not just going to, you know, have someone retire and then come back under the ESI contract, and then there's no opportunity. So I'm happy to see, after the couple of study sessions that we've had, that you did put this criteria in. And those two points, the, you know, one was eligibility, the likelihood of being able to successfully fill the potential vacancy through an internal promotional process. That gives people an opportunity to move up through the system and be promoted. And then your number B has an assessment of receiving applications from qualified individuals based on a competitive job market for a potential vacancy. So those were the two things that I saw that you added in, and make me feel good about this policy. At least, you know, I understand this is something that we need, you know, to keep qualified employees. And so, but I do want to make sure that our city is growing and getting, you know, new blood and new ideas. And so I'm good with how you put this criteria in there and to know that this is something that we'll look at, and it's just not going to be an automatic. But I understand your concern, you know, as far as, you know, is there going to be, you know, how are other employees going to feel about it. But I'm just happy to see that this criteria was put in there. Thank you.
Matt?
I don't want to echo everything Lisa said, but I agree, and I appreciate that, because I was worried too about people not wanting to come to work here, because we're just going to keep the same people over and over. But with the language you have, and then also case by case and used sparingly, really helped me with this, because they want to see us go out for jobs. And then if we don't get any qualified people for the jobs, then of course, you know, we could fall back on this. Or if someone is very highly qualified and has a unique set of skills that we can keep, you know, of course, that'd be the best thing for the city. So thank you guys for putting so much work into this, and I can support it under these circumstances in terms that you laid out.
Anyone else?
And Mayor, and I know there was just like some, like a small typo in there. I think I brought it up to Larry on number two. It said, need the criteria of C through F. It's, I think it's supposed to say A through F. Scott, I don't know, on the second page, page two?
The Administrative Directive?
Did you, pardon me?
In the, in the Administrative Directive? Yeah, we're still, it's a work in progress.
Yes, that's what he said.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Nope, anybody else? Okay. All right, thank you, Scott. Seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5421.1. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending resolution number 5421 to expand the authorized use of approved staffing agreement with Educational Services LLC to include retirees from the city and authorizing the execution of documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5421.1 as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, let's move to item I2. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a bridging agreement with Wilson &amp; Company Engineering and Architectures for construction management services of various roadway projects. Wilson currently provides project management services for a number of projects that we're currently working on. Some notable ones are the McCartney Road project widening from I-10 to Panal Avenue, the Trekkle Road widening from Rodeo up to McCartney. And then I provided a list of other projects that they are currently working on and will hopefully continue to work on if this contract is approved. We did use Wilson &amp; Company and particularly one engineer, Owen Mills, who is the consultant for the city that successfully managed these projects for the past year and a half now. And this contract would continue that relationship and his efforts to move those projects forward. We did identify in the fiscal section the account numbers that we will use to pay for this position or this consulting service. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Counsel? All right, thank you, Kevin. Seeing no questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5721. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal by Wilson &amp; Company, Inc. to provide construction management services on various roadway improvement projects, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5721 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, let's move to item I3. Kevin?
Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates with a total bid amount of $403,700 and a contingency of $20,000 for a total not to exceed $423,700. Approximately six months ago, we went under contract with Kimley Horn to, for design services for the McCartney Road design or widening project. And the initial contract with Kimley Horn was to take the plan set for the entire corridor to 30%. Now that we're starting to phase out and get ready for construction, this will be the contract to take the portion from Panal to Trekkle to 100% design plans so that our C Mar contractor can then start to develop the GMP for the construction of that project. We've been very fortunate to have Kimley Horn, very talented engineering group, to help us design this complicated project, and we're ready to move forward with the next phase. We did go through a qualifications-based solicitation when we originally chose them and want to continue working with them in the future. And we did identify the funding sources in our budget that was approved by council. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt?
Let's get it done.
Let's get it done.
That's the plan.
Kevin, speaking of getting it done, I know they're starting in the next couple of weeks on Trekkle Road. Are you waiting till they're done on Trekkle before you start this project, or will they both be going at the same time?
No, this, we won't be under construction on this for probably another, best guess would be five to seven months.
And they anticipate they're going to be done with Trekkle? I think they told me the end of April, right?
That was the plan, yes.
Thank you.
This happens to affect one of his schools. Kind of important.
There's not much that we do that doesn't impact schools all over town, so...
We're looking forward to that medium on Trekkle.
Well, and I believe everyone's looking forward to this. It seems like, I mean, we're all ready. But will you have, you know, a calendar as far as, you know, what's going to be happening, that you're going to be able to provide to the school district's community to, you know, once you have a construction plan, you're calendar-ready? When will that come out?
You know, all I can say is you got to check with the school district to see the communication that we have with them now. Through Heather's efforts and our project teams, they really have done an outstanding job reaching out to each of the schools and how they're going to be directly impacted. There is no way we can do these projects without having a negative impact on their ability to operate. But we try to lessen that impact and fully inform them.
And Kevin, Kevin, to you and to the PIO's office, who's up in the crow's nest up there, maybe take some notes. We need, we really should, Lisa's point, we can utilize CG Helps, or not CG Helps, but CG Alerts, and send those notifications out like we do with the sewer line and some of that kind of stuff. So make sure that's on top of your radar, because you can't overcommunicate, especially when it's coming to roads and people trying to get around, especially around the high school, where there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, the most consistent person at our project meetings is Heather. She is a participant in each of our project meetings, our weekly or bi-weekly meetings. She's on that call, hearing what's happening, and really is ahead of us on reaching out to the public. So we give her a lot of kudos for that.
All right, we just need to make sure we fill her with lots of information. Okay.
For sure.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Kevin. Seeing none, I'll call for a resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5723. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Kimley Horn &amp; Associates, Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the planned McCartney Road improvements from Panal Avenue to Trekkle Road, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5723 as presented. Second?
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item J. This is our boards and commissions. So we're asking the council to consider approval of the appointments of Ernest Felice and Ricardo Tejada to the Transit Advisory Committee with terms to extend through November 21st, 2027. First of all, just a shout out to these two individuals and thank them for their contribution and, because I think one of them is a repeat.
Ernie, here.
Ernie, thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie, and thanks for your volunteering. Yeah, thanks to really all of our volunteers. This is, we can't do this without you, so thank you. I need a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the appointments of Ernest Felice and Ricardo Tejada to the Transit Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Ernie, you're committed again. Thank you. All right. Next is item K. This is ordinances resolutions. We have item K1. And back to you, Scott?
Mr. Mayor, members, the council items K1 and K2 are related, and so I'll be presenting on both of those. The city charter creates the office of city judge and prescribes the process that's to be followed for filling a vacancy and creates the term of the office to be co-terminous with that of the mayor. And so every two years, we go through the process of this same process, incumbent or no incumbent. And if the city judge were to, was to resign, and that happened several years ago, then the process is used to fill the vacancy. The charter says that the council creates the Judicial Selection Committee by ordinance. And because the charter puts a very limited timeframe on the time that the committee has to do its work to get its recommendation to the council, and that is 30 days from the end of the term, so... So the, the term actually ends on November, on December 2nd, and so January 1st is actually the, the limitation. We ask for an emergency clause so that the committee can get to work very quickly. Another thing, the charter will allow the council through ordinance to provide any direction that you wish to provide to the committee in relationship to doing its work. And over the course of time, the, the council has pretty much chosen not to do that. Couple of times provided some information. So if there were any criteria that you wanted the, the selection committee to follow, you would need this evening to first consider an amendment to the ordinance to include that. Otherwise, this ordinance will stand, and so you'll create the committee with the ordinance. And the second item then is the process of appointing five citizens to serve on the committee. And it has been the council's practice over a long period of time to ask each council member to suggest a name, seven council members obviously, and five members on the committee. And those are then aggregated, and then the, the, the process moves through the office of mayor to make a recommendation for the five individuals to serve on the committee, including the chairman. So that process took place, and so the second part, K-2, after you establish the committee by ordinance, will be appointing the judicial selection committee. And those five members that have been suggested include Michelle Emig, who's been asked to serve as chair. Each of these individuals have been contacted and they're willing to serve, Gilberto Figueroa, Randy Robbins, Timothy Wakefield, and Reginald Winston. And they will come together and absent any other direction, they basically decide how they're going to do their work, interview, not interview, what have you. And they move through their process and ultimately come out, after following the open meetings law, they'll come out with a recommendation. And the charter says, the only charter, the only charter direction given to the committee is they must recommend at least two names for your consideration, and you must select someone from the list that they provide. So those are the parameters that are here this evening, so we're asking your first action to approve ordinance creating the committee with an emergency clause, and then second, to appoint the committee as indicated.
Scott, could you read the names again for me?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Could you read the names again of the, of the committee?
The name, the committee is Michelle Emig, who's been asked to serve as chair, Gilberto Figueroa, Randy Robbins, Timothy Wakefield, and Reginald Winston. And they're listed there in your request for council action.
All right. Anybody have any questions, or Scott? Everybody understands the process? All right. Okay. Seeing no questions then, Scott, thank you for that thorough explanation. We'll consider ordinance number, this is creating the, the actual judicial selection committee and declaring an emergency. Entertained a motion?
Ordinance.
Oh, ordinance, please, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 3453. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, creating a judicial selection committee, describing its duties, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 3453 as presented.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Oh, Donna.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Right. And to the five folks who volunteered, thank you, number one. Thank you for your service. I know Michelle will do a good job as the chair. And, and then a thanks to, really to Roberto Figueroa, Randy Robbins, Reginald Winston, and Tim Whitfield. So thank you, Brad.
You still need to appoint them.
Pardon me?
That's a separate matter. You still need to actually appoint them. Or next.
Right. I was going to do that. I was just thanking him.
Call me a point.
So entertain a motion to appoint the slate as presented?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I was getting there, Brett. All right. Next few that we have are public hearings. So the first item is our item L-1. Planning and Development Department Director, Staff.
James is going to take the first item.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the item in front of you this evening is a request to amend a portion of the Mission Port del Rio Planned Area Development. The area that is proposed for an amendment is highlighted on your screen. It's property that sits on the north side of Quartzon Road, east of Peert, abutting the Mission Valley neighborhood. Mission Port del Rio is a 250-acre planned area development zone. As you can see on its land use map, it's predominantly entitled for single-family residential development. However, there is a generous open space spine in the middle. And then as you go further south, closer to Quartzon, there are some different land uses. There's high-density residential designated land, and then commercial at the hard corner. And then wedged in between those land uses in Mission Valley is an area designated for medium-density residential to accommodate single-family attached homes. Parcel K is the area that is subject to the amendment. It currently allows a medium density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre for single-family attached homes that are for sale. Now, to give you an idea of what single-family attached homes looks like, you could have something like the development in the, what occurs at Ironwood Village in, in the city. Those, as you see in that top picture, they're two separate dwellings, but they're actually separately owned. The, the common wall divides the ownership. You could have something like the middle picture, a different example, although that's probably more like Iowa than you'd see in Arizona. Or you could even probably have a row of homes that are connected to each other, but separately owned. The amendment in front of you this evening is basically to revise parcel K to allow rented product, but at the same density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre. And so interestingly, you could still end up with the same product, something similar to Ironwood Village, or the Iowa example, or, or something that is multiple connected units. However, in this case, it would just simply be rented, not individually owned. All of these units would sit on one parcel instead of being potentially platted out into individual lots. But the amendment would also allow detached homes for rent, similar to the images that you see on the right. You know, and it's surprising that at first blush, you might think, well, those, those look like they could be for sale. They have, you know, in, in some of the examples, there's garages. But these are examples of where there are actually for-rent development. And at a density maximum of 4.7, you would see something that looks more like a single-family neighborhood. You wouldn't get the density that you see with the multiple rented cottages at Quartzon and Trekkle, or Cottonwood and Trekkle, I'm sorry, and Cottonwood and Peert. The driver for this amendment is due to the fact that the property does not have certificates of assured water supply. And of course, those are needed when proposing to take an existing parcel and create six or more lots. However, this amendment would allow the ability for it to be platted and separately owned in the future. So that entitlement isn't being requested to go away. It's just simply giving an opportunity for the property to develop prior to the ability to get cause if and when. And ideally, it could be laid out in a way such as if they were to go with individual detached homes, the plating could potentially come later. When taking a look at the city's residential design standards for planned area developments, when you look in the multifamily section, you would see that the existing PAD technically considers this multifamily already. The reason why I say that is because medium density is considered anything between 2 to 12 dwelling units per acre and contains these different types of multifamily product. Currently, the PAD allows for, and only allows within parcel K for it to be single-family attached, but that would be very similar to townhomes. It's, it's a product that you own the, you know, your individual unit and maybe a little bit of space in the front yard and backyard, but you're inherently sharing walls with others. What this amendment would do is it would introduce these other types of medium-density product by nature of the fact that these are more rented-type products. What the PAD amendment also does is it restricts and makes clear that among the medium-density product that we see in the PAD residential design standards, manufactured home parks would be prohibited. So with this amendment, if approved, you wouldn't see that type of medium-density product, but you could see still what is highlighted in yellow and highlighted in blue, except in, in the scenario prior to certificates of assured water supply becoming available, this type of product would be rented. When reviewing amendments to PADs, this is the criteria that has to get evaluated, and the staff report goes into each of these in great detail, but I just want to focus on conformance to the city's general plan and conformance to the city's zoning ordinance. So when looking at conformance to the general plan, we do look at the community need for multifamily, provided that in the general plan, it envisions the predominance of housing being single-family within this particular general plan category of neighborhoods. This property was factored in the study as having an existing entitlement for medium-density residential and technically for multifamily, since it does allow for that type of product of, of townhomes at 4.7 dwelling units per acre. This amendment proposes no density increase. It would still remain at 4.7. And at, at 4.7, this is very low medium density, since single-family development or low-density development is allowed up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. So this is just a little bit more than low-density. As I mentioned, this site sits in the neighborhoods category where there is some allowance for multifamily properties. The general plan 2030 does support a density of up to 24 dwelling units per acre on a property this size. It being just shy of 12 acres, it could technically be proposed to be amended to allow a much greater density, but the maximum density proposed for this parcel is significantly less than the maximum that the general plan supports. In looking at one of the specific goals of the general plan, it talks about the spatial form and design of developments in neighborhood areas should be appropriate to adjoining land uses. And when looking at the layout of Mission Port del Rio compared to the Mission Valley neighborhood, the, the closest developed area to this, the way that it's laid out really is a good transition of uses. You have the more intense uses of high-density residential and commercial along busy Peert, and then between that and the lower-density Mission Valley neighborhood is this medium-density residential area, which isn't changing in terms of the density. The primary change is it will be a rented product. Regarding conformance of the city's zoning ordinance, planned area developments are required to follow the residential design standards, which I had discussed on a few slides back. And in the review of the proposed amended PAD guide, it does comply with the design standards. The maximum building height is 28 feet, the same maximum height as currently in place for parcel K. They are proposing some minimum setbacks that comply with the design standards. There would be a 25-foot minimum setback from the east, so that provides a really good buffer between parcel K and the Mission Valley development. With respect to Arizona Revised Statutes 9-462.01.J., before adopting any zoning ordinance or zoning ordinance text amendment, the legislative body shall consider a housing impact statement regarding the impact of the zoning ordinance, and it shall include basically an assessment of would an increase in density, or would it, or would a change in zoning impact the average cost to construct housing for sale or for rent, among these other two factors below. So when looking at this, we, we do look at the fact that this amendment will allow the ability to construct approximately 55 dwelling units at a density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre. The current zoning allows exactly the same. We likely, as city staff, would be reluctant to recommend an approval for an increase in density at this time due to finding that the current housing supply for, for medium-density within the city does meet the community's need. Regarding the next steps, should this PAD amendment be approved by council this evening, the next steps for the applicant would include the requirement for them to submit a major site plan and potentially plating in the future if they are able to parcel it into individual lots. At the time of the major site plan is when we do receive reports such as traffic utility, and it's examined at that time to ensure that the infrastructure necessary to support the development is in place or otherwise accommodated by the developer themselves. Regarding the public notification, we met that which was required by code. We did receive one inquiry prior to planning commission who was not in favor of multifamily development. And then at the planning commission itself, there was a resident from Mission Valley who was concerned that this was a loophole to the restriction on certificates of assured water supply. The staff report and the RCA did describe that process a little bit more clearly, but essentially, there's a lot of development that can be approved on property that doesn't have certificates of assured water supply. Commercial development, because often that doesn't need to be parceled out. But really, the explanation, this is more for the public's benefit, is that it basically comes from a different pot of water. Arizona Water Company would enter into a water service agreement with someone wishing to develop on property, whether the property has certificates or otherwise. If it doesn't have certificates, Arizona Water Company still does have to report to ADWR, and there is a regulation of how much groundwater can be sold out of the aquifer. And there's an X amount of groundwater that is able to be sold for properties that doesn't have certificates of assured water supply. And then for properties with certificate of assured water supply, that's more of a known, or that's more determined by those certificates themselves. So there is awareness of how much groundwater there is, yeah, monitoring of that in terms of what Arizona Water Company can sell for development. I say that because I, I wasn't able to get in contact with that resident from Mission Valley. Valley, so hopefully they can get this communication. So at the October 3 public hearing in front of planning commission on a unanimous vote of 6-0, they did move to forward a recommendation to city council to approve this PAD amendment for parcel K within Mission Port del Rio, subject to the boilerplate condition that we place on a lot of these zone changes that give the ability for the city to seek right-of-way. In this case, it would be for Quartzon Road, should we need right-of-way prior to when they would be obligated to dedicate it to us, which would ordinarily occur at the time of major site plan, building permitting, et cetera. And that concludes my presentation.
No questions, but James, thank you for explaining this. You know, I know so many times we take it for granted that we know why we're doing certain things, and so I'm glad you explained it for someone that might be watching or read the minutes or whatever, so I appreciate that. And I do appreciate that you took into consideration the housing study and not increasing the densities, because this is already in, you know, the general plan for this density, and then we have enough supply to last us for a while, so I'm glad that we kind of kept it, you know, in that, you know, the numbers that are there. So, but then there's also an opportunity that maybe it could be become townhomes at some point, which is really nice, because we know in all of our studies, we know there's a need for that, but unfortunately, because of the lack of certificates, we're unable to get more townhomes, but this is something that is an alternative.
Working on it. Any other questions, comments?
Well, yeah. So James, the explanation about the water, I too appreciate that. A couple of things were involved in that explanation that sounded new to me, but I wonder, has anything really been changed, or is Arizona Water offering water to the development? Is that limited on the number of subdivisions they have of that property? Or in theory, could a single-family residence builder go in there and ask Arizona Water to give them water or approve water?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, not exactly, and I'm speaking in very general terms. I think if someone who's more knowledgeable than I were hearing this, they'd probably say I'm about like 70% correct with my explanation of it. But if a property does not have certificates of assured water supply, there would not be a way for Arizona Water Company to serve the site with more than five lots. Six or more would be prohibited. But there's nothing that restricts Arizona Water Company from entering into a water service agreement to service development on the site in general. They would be prohibited from doing so if it involved multiple parceling, but if someone came in and proposed development that didn't involve parceling,
Right.
Regardless of the use, they would look at the amount of groundwater to be withdrawn, and they would have to report that to Arizona Department of Water Resources. And so that is being regulated. It's just, it's regulated out of a different pot for properties that doesn't, that don't have certificates versus properties that do.
Okay. And I know we are not to the point where they're going to submit a site plan, but if it is either condominiums or duplexes or, and they're rented, does that require private streets, or is that still an undecided?
That's a good question. If they're unable to plat it at this point, we would just expect to see internal private access drives through the development. There are ways that, if the anticipation that at some point in the future it is going to be platted into more of a true individually-lotted neighborhood, we would probably encourage them to build those internal roadways in a manner that could easily become public. But even with individual lots, it doesn't automatically prompt or require that those internal driveways become public. Ironwood Village, for example, is platted into multiple, single-family attached lots, but all of those drives through there are private and privately maintained. But we would probably make sure that it's done in a way that does meet city standards to a greater degree than just, you know, a small development.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing on item L1. This is for ordinance number 1178.455. Reminding anybody who would like to comment on this, on this public hearing, that try and keep your comments to three minutes and on the topic. Please come forward. Please state your name for our records, name and address, please.
I live in Mission Valley.
Speak into the mic, because people need to hear. There you go.
I'm Rachel Guian. I live in Mission Valley, 1645 East Anne Exavert Drive. Been there almost 20 years. We were, I understand that there is a sign out there, but because of the construction and the limited access to that sign, I honestly didn't see it. We're kind of restricted from that. We weren't notified by our homeowners association by a letter or email that this was going to be a possible multifamily unit proposal. I understand that when multifamily or units such as apartments move into a subdivision area, sometimes the taxes are affected. We pay for those as well, and it also devalues our homes. So I am not in favor of that as a resident there. It's going to block a lot of privacy. Our walkways, our walk paths are one of the nicer ones in subdivisions. I feel very safe there. I'm not saying that it's not possible for multifamily units to not have a safety issue there, but I just feel as a resident there that it's... I think it's going to prevent a lot of people from wanting to either purchase homes there or even rent homes there. We have a lot of rentals in that subdivision that are just not being rented out, and I feel that a multifamily unit will prohibit that even further. If that is an option that they do propose later, I feel that, possibly a single-story is better than, you know, two or three stories up. I think driving around the city, I see a lot of those in neighborhoods, and I see more going up. I'm not saying that, I'm not against them, I'm just, in that particular area, that little slot, I just, I don't, I, me as a resident there, I just, I've been here 20 years, I don't think that that's a good area to put that. I'm concerned about congested traffic in that area that will increase at the stoplight. Already there, there's a lot of accidents that are in that four-way. Too many vehicles.
That's just three minutes, you can wrap it up, please.
Okay. So I'm concerned about the increased traffic, and if possible, maybe move it to north of the Wash where it's more towards rodeo road. That's just my suggestion. And if so, maybe a senior, senior living areas. I think that that's more of what the city is needing, not only multifamily, but our seniors are needing more affordable housing. So if you could just take that into consideration, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Maybe at the end, Mary.
Pardon me?
Maybe at the end of this one.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? All right. Can I close the public hearing and then ask the applicant to speak? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll ask the applicant to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Jessica Sarkisian, Upfront Planning, representing the applicant. I just want, I didn't, Jim, he did a great presentation. I just think there's some clarifications, I think, that would help the audience and anybody watching about this project, what it is and what it isn't. A big thing that I am in the planning world disagree with is the term multifamily, because what we're really talking about is density, and I think that's confusing a lot of people, maybe in here. So this is an existing residential PAD. What you see up on the screen here is what is previously, was previously already approved. I'm not sure if it, I believe it was the early 2000s or late 1990s or something like that, so it's a fairly old PAD. So all those single-family lots and things like that were in the PAD, but they haven't been platted. So as they were waiting for developers, it's been sitting for quite a while. The piece directly on the corner of the intersection at the north, at the north, it's actually south, but that's the church going in there, and then we have that long slender lot. So as you can see, it's right here, and so the rest of the subdivision hasn't been going in, but that directly at the corner in Quartzon, that is the church going in, and then we're directly to the east of that. And so the big issue with this parcel, the real reason that we were coming through is not, we don't have a user in mind yet, we don't, but the biggest issue is that in the previous PAD, it stated that parcel K had to be attached homes, and so we're looking to remove that requirement is the big thing. And when you do that and you look at the density, which was previously approved, and we're not changing at 4.7, the density according to code considers it multifamily. And also, that's when it starts talking about it's for rent, but when you think about it for rent, as she mentioned in her subdivision, you can rent out even lotted homes. It makes no difference if it's for sale or any of that stuff, but being at that is a single lot right now, it would be only rent if they move forward. So just so you can see, this was, it was 2004, there we go. It was, this is the previously lotted-out plan for that parcel. We're not suggesting that this was, is one of what it's going to be, but with a maximum lot count of 55 units, this is as dense as it's going to get. It's going to look very similar to a single-family tract. It will have lots in there, cul-de-sacs and things like that. It will most likely, may or may not connect to the north depending on covering that drainage canal. That's all to be determined in the future when the future user is in mind. So previously, this is the lotting it would look like, and it would just be that the homes would be attached to each other, so you might have two homes together as a townhouse. And so looking to sell the property, getting more enticed a builder, that was asked to be removed, and that is why this changed. Also, keeping in mind, we realize that currently it is a one-lot thing, and so with the water issue. So we, the one other thing we did add to the subdivision, keeping in mind that we, in the future, would like to be able to sell if possible, or they would be able to sell lots, is we put in additional development standards. Previously, parcel K had one set of development standards for the entire parcel of just north, south, east and west. So we've gone in there and added a separate development standards table for parcel K to match similar to a single-family subdivision, is if someone has their lot, what are your setbacks on the sides, what are your setbacks in the rear, and things like that. And again, I know they were mentioning worry about three stories, the maximum height of this is 28 feet, similar to the rest of the entire community, has the same development standards of that as well. So we did put in different setbacks, in case in the future it is lotted, it gives that ability in the future. And the unit, so here you can see the development standards. So the top one is what it looks like as it currently stands. We have not changed anything, and it is meeting residential development standards for the city. And then we put it in the bottom as well, so that we could clarify, if someone does want to lot it individually and sell it, these are your requirements for individual lots if they're parcelized. And then because there's also issues now coming up with ADUs and all kinds of stuff, we put in separate accessory unit structures, so it's very clear how these are to act as single-family lots if platted. So you can see the old site plan, it says single-family residential attached, and that was a big issue that we were having, and so we simply just said medium-density residential according to what the current zoning code requires. And that is, is hoping, a little clearer for everybody to calm them and any concerns they may have. The intent is for it to act more like you would see a regular subdivision with streets. It's not going to be a three-story walk-up or anything like that, so. Any questions?
Questions, council?
Will it have like a community pool or anything like that in there?
Right now, that there's no commu, this is, so, I mean, it doesn't even look like there's a, like a community center or anything. There is a massive drainage open space area, so this would all be part of the Mission del, I can't remember if I say it right. Mission Port del Rio HOA, CCNRs, whenever is going to be in the future, but it's not shown on there right now. I mean, I don't even know that there's that much space to do that, if I can go backwards. They would have, they would have to redesign, they're going to have to redesign it anyway. So there could be, they could take out a couple lots. I've seen in smaller subdivisions where they put in a, take a lot or two and put in a pool, but it's not determined at this time, so.
Any other comments or questions?
I had a comment, I had a question for James, we're there.
Go ahead.
You did notices did go out to the neighbors, correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, because there was a question about that, so. But yeah, I think the easy thing here is too, is they're not changing the density, and it's always been, you know, designed for that density, and they've been, you know, same height as the two-story houses that are in the subdivision, so I think it's a good use and gives a new product, which we, I think we have a few that like it around town that, you know, that worked out pretty well, so. But thank you for the presentation.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Just, James, can you explain the traffic, how the traffic study, when it comes in to the speaker that came up, because one of the issues was traffic.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. So at the time of the major site plan, we do require a traffic report. The type of traffic report is dependent on how many estimated hourly trips the development is proposed to generate. So it's possible that with such low density, it might not require as in-depth of a report as it would if it were a more intense-type development. But we do wait for major site plans to middle to require that as opposed to at the time of zoning. And I give the example of, say we had required it when this was approved in 2004, it really wouldn't serve any purpose now if they were ready to break ground right this minute, because, you know, 20 years later, there's been lots of changes. So we don't require at the time of any kind of zoning or zoning amendment, because we really don't know when the next steps are going to occur. The zoning, however, doesn't expire, so we get it when they're more at the verge of development, because that will give us the best snapshot of where we're at from an infrastructure standpoint. But the traffic report will look at the estimated number of trips. It will also look at its projected distribution and what streets are going to be reliant upon those trips to go to and from. And then it will look at the existing conditions, how those roadways score. It's almost like a report card. A, of course, the roads are great. F is, they're horrible, they're going to flunk. And so it looks at, will that additional traffic cause a level of service deficiency? Will it cause the level of service of those roadways to fall below what's considered an acceptable level of service? If they do, if those roads do fall below an acceptable level of service, we cannot recommend approval of the plan unless... If they do, if those roads do fall below a, an acceptable level of service, we cannot recommend approval of the plan unless the traffic report and the site plan shows how improvements to that roadway network will occur to bring it up to an acceptable level of service.
And James, Cortson is a major, is a major feeder road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, at some point in time, that's gonna be five lanes wide.
Correct. And, and there will be just automatic, automatically.
And there probably will be an off-ramp on I-10 there, in Cortson.
Maybe.
That's in the plan. Whether it ever happens or not.
Right.
But down the road, I'm just, you know, people need to realize that when you move into an area, there's, there's a bigger plan than just your street. And that, that this is meant as a major thoroughfare, uh, as is Pier. So, there's gonna be changes that come.
And, and good point, Mayor, because right now, when you look at Cortson, um, in front of that property, there's just one through lane. But going eastbound, so going towards Mission Valley from Pier, there's two lanes. And the, and the reason is, is those two lanes, there were some improvements when the development to the south side occurred. So, the same thing would happen in this case. They would be required to make certain base-level improvements, no matter what their impact is, um, adjoining their property. So, there, there would end up being two through lanes instead of one through lane going west. And there would likely be a dedicated, um, turn lane, so that you don't have slowing of traffic to turn into the development. They would have their own dedicated turn lane. And the same may be true for a left-turn lane, but we don't, we don't know at this point. There, there, it would get evaluated with the, um, with the major site plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Sorry, one other thing too, since there are questions, is the major site plan is the time when they decide where the height of the building is, where the buildings are gonna be, and that will be a public process as well at the planning department. So, that's a good time to give your input on where the buildings will lay out, how it will look, all that sort of stuff. Because what we're doing tonight is just saying.
Just zoning.
Just the zoning of it, not actually what it's gonna look like.
Right.
Um, and then the water question always comes up, but that's a state law, not a city ordinance, so we're bound by those laws.
And you could go down a rabbit hole with that.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, then I will ask for an ordinance number, please. Gloria?
Ordinance number 1178.455. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to the Mission Port Del Rio PAD generally located at the northeast corner of Cortson Road, and Pier Road, Casa Grande, Arizona, to change the land uses on parcel K from single-family to multifamily residential.
Mayor McFarland, I would move to approve ordinance number 1178.455 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is L-2, another public hearing. Jaclyn, is this yours?
Yes.
All right.
All right, good evening, Mayor, counsel. Uh, the next couple, um, presentations will be on tax amendments. So, the purpose of this proposed tax amendment is to allow for accessory dwelling units as a permitted use within the following zoning districts, urban ranch, rural ranch, suburban homestead, single-family residential R1 and R1A, multifamily R2, mobile home residential R4, as well as planned area developments. Uh, the proposed standards are in compliance with House Bill, uh, 2720 that will, was passed by this year's legislature. It goes to effect in January. And then although the current, currently this bill only applies to cities, or part of this bill applies to cities over a population of 75,000, uh, city is on the cusp of meeting this population threshold, and this is something that we've been wanting, um, to do for a long time. A little background on ADUs. An ADU is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living and sleeping space. Uh, these units are si, smaller in size to the primary residence. They're also known as casitas, mother-in-law units, granny flats, backyard cottages, carriage houses, houses, and can also be, uh, tashed or detached. Uh, some, some of the goals of ADUs is to provide an alternative supply of affordable housing. Uh, typical residents may be seniors or young adults. It supports for, uh, multi-generational living, uh, provides supplemental incomes to homeowners, and allows for diverse and flexible housing options within a neighborhood and promotes mixed-income communities, as well as permit the housing sale that already exists in the community and provides a legal avenue for upgrades to these units. Uh, so, looking at some of the development standards, uh, the gross floor area of an ADU, ADU is limited to 75% of the gross, gross floor area of a single-family dwelling unit, or 1,000 square feet. Setbacks shall not be located within the required front or corner yard setback, and side yard setbacks are five feet, or, um, whatever the zoning district allows, whichever less. Um, that's added because in R1A, it could be as close as three feet. Uh, rear yard setback is five, and, uh, projections beyond the exterior walls such as eaves, overhangs, um, may encroach into the required setback setbacks by up to 18 inches, and this is common with our code. I just wanna note that these setbacks are what is allowed, um, in the House bill too. Um, building height would be subject to the single-family residential zone district. And then, uh, the total building footprint area of all accessory structures, including an ADU located in the required rear yard setback of the primary structure, shall be limited to no more than 25% of the required rear yard setback of the primary structure. That's currently in our code too, so I just wanted to point that out. And then, an ADU, uh, may not be built on top of current or planned public utility easements unless the property owner receives written consent from any utility that is currently using the public utility easement or the, or may use the public easement in the future. And that's also part of the, um, housing bill. Regarding notification efforts, uh, uh, we held, held an open house in July to discuss these, uh, tax amendments, as well as public works, upcoming projects. It was really well-attended with approximately 40, um, community members, and then a display ads were published in the dispatch. So, with that, at the October 3rd, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 6-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the following zoning code tax amendment. Uh, set revisions establish ADUs as permitted uses within the urban ranch, rural ranch, suburban homestead, single-family residential, multifamily R2, mobile home residential R4, R4, and PAD zoning districts, and establishes development standards for said accessory dwelling units. And establishes and amends definitions related to accessory dwelling units with the following chapters. Happy to answer any questions counsel may have.
Questions?
I think I have several.
Go ahead, Bob.
Um, is this state law, or?
Yes.
It will be.
So.
It will be January 1.
So, do we have any option? I mean, can we say, "No, we don't want it"?
Well, technically, we're not 75,000 yet, so we technically don't.
But once we are, we fall under state law. So, we really don't have, okay. Well, that answers my other five questions.
Matt, go ahead.
I don't think it would take effect until the census of 75,000.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna.
I mean, what you give is a couple more years, but I like getting out of it ahead of it.
Yeah, exactly.
You could also get ahead of it.
And then I had a cou, what was the setbacks?
Five foot.
But you said there's five foot and/or?
There's one that's three.
There was something else, right?
So, per the, per the housing bill, we couldn't restrict it any less than what our current code allows.
Okay.
So, um, majority of them are five feet, except for R1A allows, it's like three and, uh, seven. So, it'll be 10 feet total.
Between, okay.
Yeah.
I heard you say something, but I didn't quite understand. Thank you.
Did you say, um, the, the slide that showed the meeting, did you say 40 people attended?
Approximately.
What kind of feedback did you get?
We didn't, it was well, um, we didn't get anything in writing, um, on this one. People we talked to were, um, in favor of it, um, wanting to get more information on how.
Yeah, but it did, it was more than just the ADUs.
Yeah.
We had a couple other things that we're gonna talk about tonight. Were also part of that.
Yeah, so, so again, nothing formally came back to us on this one, but it was, we did not re, see, nobody really seemed against it.
It was in here, it was pretty full.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the citizens that I spoke with all supported it. They thought it was gonna provide some, uh, affordable, alternative housing choices for people, uh, especially the seniors and the young adults. And actually, a couple contractors showed up who are building ADUs. Their local contractors are building them in other communities, and we're excited that they could, uh, potentially build them here for their clients as well.
Comments, questions, anybody? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the, uh, public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. All right, I don't see anybody, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1397.17.61. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending table 17.16.030A and chapters 17.12 and 17.52 of title 17, zoning relating to the regulation of accessory dwelling units, establishing the severability of various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1397.17.61 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item L-3. This one yours too, Jaclyn? Thanks, James.
Don't be looking down.
So, this, uh, proposed, uh, tax amendment is to allow for manufactured homes as a conditional use permit within certain R1 zoning districts by creating an overlay zone. Currently, manufactured homes located on individually-owned lots or within leased rented spaces within manufactured home parks are allowed in the R4 zoning district or through a PAD. Um, however, prior to 1999, manufactured homes were allowed in certain subdivisions with the CUP. So, this proposed tax amendment is proposing to go back to the future and reinstitutes policy to allow manufactured homes within certain R1 zoning districts. And then, uh, we've also included design elements that reflect typical stick-built home constructions, such as front porches, carports and pitched roofs. A few other points I wanna make is that, um, by allowing, uh, manufactured homes with a CUP in certain, um, neighborhoods, it allows for property owners to build equity, something that they cannot, um, do within a rented space in a manufactured home park. Um, the two areas that, um, we'll see on the next couple slides of this overlay, um, currently have, um, a few legal non, or many legal non-conforming manufactured homes, where, um, currently they cannot be replaced. Um, if they, if they are removed, a stick-built house has to be built in that, in their place. So, if this tax amendment is approved, it would allow to be replaced with a newer model, um, with this conditional use permit. And then it also, it'll be limited to these areas where there are existing manufactured homes, as I noted. Um, and there's also undeveloped lots as well. So, staff believes with these design elements, um, that would be required as part of the CUP process would be benefit to both the neighborhood and property owners. Um, so, the first overlay area is, um, area south of Florence between Treckle and Peblow. And the second one is, um, the R1 zoning within, uh, west of Panal, south of Cottonwood Lane and north of McMurray. And as you can see in this area, there is also already a lot of R4 in this area. The R1 is what's, um, highlighted, located in the red area. Again, with, um, regarding notification efforts, uh, this was presented at the open house in July. We did receive one comment card expressing support for this tax amendment, and then a display ads were published in the dispatch. Uh, so, staff, uh, presented this to the Planning and Zoning Commission in October. Uh, they voted 6-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council, uh, for the zoning code tax amendments related to manufactured module and sectional dwellings, sectional, sectional dwellings that amend the following chapters. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I think the, just my, my thoughts on this is, is that it gives us an opportunity, I think, to do a little more infill, especially in a couple of our communities here in town, that some already have.
Mm-hmm.
Several manufactured homes in them. In fact, you could probably call them mobile homes, 'cause they were mobile homes at the time, and, uh, today, they're a lot different. They're manufactured homes, and they have different HUD requirements for construction. So, all the new manufactured homes that are built somewhere else and brought here, uh, are actually just like a stick-built home. Uh, the, the nice part about this is I think that you guys are gonna require some design requirements, like a, like a porch, uh, so it won't look like a mobile home. You know, even allowing garages, carports, that sort of thing. Pitched roof, that sort of thing too, so. Um, yeah, I, I think this is a good move. Matt?
I picture, like, especially the, the, some of the areas where you've had it, there's some older homes and stuff, and I know we do some rehab projects in there, but this would be a great way to do some of that too, for, um, probably less, less expensive option, as well as a quicker option, you know, to get it done. The other thing is, uh, just for people, the CUP process, how, how would that work? I, I mean, so, so just so people know, you can't just put it there. You have to get a, a special conditional use permit to move a manufactured home into that area. And so, maybe you wanna go into a quick overview of how, how that would work?
Sure. So, um, conditional use permits, um, go to Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. So, there's criteria that we look at. So, each, um, manufactured home would be on a case-by-case basis.
And public.
At a public hearing, yes.
That was the point.
Public notice.
Yeah, so that way, if someone really is a.
They're all pretty much one-offs anyway.
You can talk about it, so.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And one of the criteria is, um, compatibility with the neighborhood. So, if, and so it's something that we could look at to make sure that, are there a lot, or are, on an infill lot, if, what, what's around it?
I mean, 'cause like these, you have different looks of these homes right here on the screen. So, you'd be able to say at that point, you could go with one that looks more like this one, because that would be more compatible with the neighborhood than one that looks different, correct?
I've seen, and I've seen these with stucco on them. So, I mean, you know.
And actually, the third picture is an existing one in, in the city.
There you go. Bob?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm gonna make a statement that's just purely my, uh, my thoughts and my position on mobile homes. And that is that I, I love manufactured homes, but I, but when they're in a controlled park and they're on rented spaces, in my opinion, it's dangerous to start, uh, having people own their own mobile home on their own lot, um, because those are the ones that you'll generally see turn into a junkyard, and, and I'm not saying everybody. Some people take very good care of their homes, just like these are right here.
Well, these aren't mobile, though. Then you can't move these. They're ground-set, they're not movable. Once they're down, they're down. That's a requirement that it be ground-set, right, Paul?
Yes, Mayor, they definitely have to be ground-set. In fact, they have to be on foundations that meet the, uh, International Residential Code, so the same kind of foundation system that you might build a stick home on.
Right.
So, yes. Uh, and I would like to point out that we do have two existing manufactured home subdivisions, we'll call them, in Casa Grande, where people own their lots and their individual homes on them. They're on both sides of, uh, at the Cortson and Thornton Road intersection, by Dave White Park, Dave White Golf Course. That Fairfield's, Fairways, that, that's, that's, uh, individual lots. They're all individually owned, and on the south side of Cortson as well. And those are, you know, well-maintained, uh, neighborhoods and subdivisions. So, I, I understand your point, though.
I, I've looked through those, and, uh, there's one that I believe is a, a managed park, that you rent the space, and, and there's another one where you buy the lot and park your own home. And again, just my opinion, I could tell. And again, just my opinion, I could tell the difference between the two as far as inoperable vehicles, mismatched paint on some of the homes. I would bet money these aren't from any of our homes in the area.
They are, one of them is.
Which one?
Which one did you say?
The third picture.
The third picture, that's here.
You know where?
Bye tomorrow.
Anyway, I think it's a can of worms to be able to bring a mobile home, and even though they're ground set, they're still movable. I mean, you can jack them up and put the wheels back on, the wheels and the axles. I don't know, I'm a little bit familiar with that business, but maybe things have changed. I don't know. But anyway, as I said, I think it's a can of worms. I think it's going to lead to people in an established neighborhood complaining about what comes in across the street from them. And for that reason, and I know I'm just one member of the council, but for that reason, I'm going to vote no on it.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay.
The only comment is, I understand your point, Bob, but you know, they are, you know, manufactured homes. I kind of like the idea that they would own their lot because they would, you know, have, you know, they purchase it, they own the land that it's on. And so, but I do like the design standards that they're coming up with, and it's going to be a case-by-case basis, and compatibility is important. So, you know, I live in a neighborhood that doesn't have an HOA, and my neighborhood has different cars up on, you know, bricks sometime, or you know, whatever. You know, so sometimes I have to call code enforcement for certain things, but, so those types of things are going to happen anywhere. But I must say, I do like the fact that they would own their lots and have.
And own their home.
And own their home. And I like the idea of these design standards and a case-by, the case-by-case basis is really important, because you want to make sure that they're putting a house that's compatible there. So, but there are some, my doctor's office had a manufactured building that you couldn't even tell was a manufactured building that was here in Casa Grande. He expanded and now does it, but, so I know there are some very nice products out there, so.
Matt, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
No.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. This is for item L3. If there's anybody here that would like to speak on this matter, this is your opportunity. Please come forward. All right, well seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1397.17.62. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending table 17.16.030A and chapter 17.12 definitions and 17.52 general building and development standards of Title 17 zoning relating to the regulation of manufactured homes, establishing the severability of various sections of the ordinance and setting an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 1397.17.62 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
No.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next is item L4, another public hearing. Jaclyn?
So this proposed tax amendment provides administrative relief to non-conforming lots of record where, under the current code, lot size and setback relief can only be granted by the Board of Adjustments. So by allowing this to be completed administratively, it saves time, resources, and money for a proposed development. The result of this code revision will be to remove regulatory barriers to the construction of new residential dwellings on smaller infill lots. These new homes will typically be smaller, affordable homes constructed by homeowners. So here's an example. This is part of a existing neighborhood created in 1949. It's zoned R1. Under our current code, R1 requires a 70 by 100 lot size. Its current lot size is 50 by 109. And R1 setbacks are 5 and 10. So under the proposed tax amendment, would allow for residents to be built on this lot with the current lot width and with a setback reduction of 3 feet 5 inches and 7 feet 1 inches instead of 5 and 10. So just an example of how this would work. And currently that could be done, it just would have to go to the Board of Adjustments for their approval. With this code tax amendment, it could be done administratively. Again, regarding notification efforts, this was part of our open house in July, and a display ad was published. I did not receive any comments or questions on this tax amendment. So at the October 3 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 6-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the following zoning code tax amendment. Said revisions define a non-conforming lot of record and establishes parameters to a non, to build on a non-conforming lot of record. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have, council may have, sorry.
Matt?
These are lots that are already made though, right?
Correct, yeah, so as of when zoning codes, so yeah, it'd be just again in older parts of town that were created prior to zoning.
And then the setbacks that you had, is that proportional to the lot size?
Yes, it'd be proportional.
Because it said reduced by 3 foot 5, I think you meant it would be at 3 foot 5.
Yeah, sorry.
If reduced by 3, you'd have like a 2 foot, but it would be something reasonable.
Right, yeah, there's a proportion. No, but so the setbacks would be 3 and 7 for this, but in theory, they could still meet that, the setbacks as well.
Okay.
Questions? Bob?
Is that house to the left, is that a zero lot line?
There's nothing, it's right against the wall.
Zero lot line?
It could be that the parcel lines are just off on the map too, so it's probably not at zero.
It's pretty close though.
Looks like it.
Looks like it.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll open the public hearing, this is on item L4. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this particular item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1397.17.63. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending chapter 17.12 definitions and 17.64, non-conforming uses of Title 17, zoning relating to the regulation of non-conforming lots, establishing the severability of various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 1397.17.63 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, item L5, our last public hearing for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul.
This is another zoning code tax amendment to Article 9, which is our rezoning processes. So a little overview, I'm just covering here kind of the primary six things that this tax amendment achieves. One, it's just renaming the article. Two, it's going to specify a maximum timeframe for determining whether an application is administratively complete. It's going to specify a maximum 180-day timeframe for processing most rezoning applications. It's going to increase the property owner, surrounding property owner notification to a minimum of 3 feet from the parcel being considered for rezoning. It's going to require a statement regarding the impact of rezoning on housing costs, and it's going to modify the process for public protest of rezoning applications to clarify how government-owned property impacts the zoning area. So what's driving this tax amendment really are some recent changes to the Arizona revised statutes, both the ones that were just made in the last legislative session and one that was made in a prior. So those changes to the state law do require that we modify our regulations and our processes to be in compliance with them. So the first change was, is to specify that the initial, as well as any subsequent, what we call completeness review, for initial or rezoning applications be completed within a maximum of 10 business days, and to require the applicant be notified in writing of the specific deficiencies that need to be addressed to pass completeness review. And that revision is required by that statute that I've cited there. Now, the interesting thing about this change in the statute is already by policy, we do this, and we do it in two days. The new state law says we have to do it in 30. So I've kind of modified our code to say, we'll do it in 10 to give us enough buffer, but our policy is still going to be to do it in two. And we track that very carefully, and by and large, you know, 95, 98% of the completeness reviews we do, we do it complete in two days. So, and we always do communicate back to the applicant. If their application does not pass completeness review, why it didn't pass and what they need to modify to allow it to pass. We can't start our formal review of an application until it passes what's known as completeness review. So that's the first change. The second change is to specify that all rezoning applications, except for those located within a historic district or those that are PAD zonings, be approved or disapproved a maximum of 180 days from being determined to be administratively complete. It allows City Council to grant one, to grant one-time extension of not more than 30 days, and allows applicant to request additional extensions to that 180-day limit. And that change is required by the statute that I've cited there. The interesting thing about this law is that, or this change, is that there was another new piece of legislation that required communities to file a report to the Arizona Commerce Commission, and we had to do about, I think that was by September 1st, informing the Commerce Commission how long it was taking us to process certain land use applications, including building permits, subdivision plots, and rezonings. So we did that, we complied with that law. And here's what we told them, what our findings were on processing rezoning applications. For conventional commercial and industrial zone changes, it takes us 100 days from the time of application submit to council's second reading. For conventional single-family, it takes us 132 days to process a rezoning. For multi-family, it takes us 137 days. So all of those, today, we have 180 days, but we're already well inside that with our current process. For PADs, it does take us 204 days. PADs tend to be a little more complex, take a little more, you know, neighborhood meetings and discussions, public discussions, so, but they are exempt, but we're still doing those in 204. Bottom line is, we're already well in compliance with this new statute, but we have to put it in our code as a requirement. The third change is to increase the mail notice of rezoning hearings to all properties located within a property from 200 feet, which is the state law, and what our current code requirement is, to 300. That's a staff-initiated change, just to reach out and do a little bit better job with community engagement and community notification of the zone changes. So we're proposing that change just to do a little bit better job in that arena. The next change is that it requires that in conjunction with the adoption of any zoning, rezoning, or zoning tax amendments, that we include, have council consider a housing impact statement that really just says, hey, what's the impact of this change on housing affordability? Is it increasing it, decreasing it, neutral? We already do, that actually was a law that was passed in 2023, the HB 2247, and we've been doing this as a matter of policy. You saw it tonight on James's mission, Poor Rio, PAD amendment, he talked about the impact on housing costs. So we already do it, but this makes it a code requirement, puts it in our zoning code, and so the all staff make sure that they address this every time there's a zone change or a tax amendment, and we analyze the impact of what our actions are on housing cost, which is a good thing to do, right? So we're going to make sure, we're going to formalize that process a little bit more. And lastly, there already is a provision in the state law that allows what's called public protest for rezoning applications. Essentially, what that state law says is that if a certain number of property owners within a certain distance of a site that's being proposed for rezoning, they sign a petition, then when council hears it, it changes your voting standard. It raises the bar on how many members of the city council have to vote to approve the zoning, so it changes the voting standard. The state law defines what the zoning area is for who is eligible to sign the petition. So this clarifies that city right-ofaways are not to be included, and measuring that distance, city-owned properties, like such as a park or a city building, not required to be, are not allowed to be included in the measurement. So it gives us some clarity on how we measure what's known as the zoning area, so that's fine, that's always good. And even more importantly, I think, is this state law gave us the authority to say when that petition has to be submitted, so we can analyze it and provide information to City Council on whether or not you've received a petition and whether or not it was valid. Today, that petition could actually be just submitted at your hearing, and we would have to like suspend the hearing to do the analysis while we determined if the signatures were valid and if it changed your voting standard. Under this change, we're requiring these petitions be submitted to the city clerk's office no later than five business days before your council hearing date, which will allow staff time to analyze the petition and allow us time to inform council when we, of the fact that your voting standard has been changed by a valid petition that's been submitted. So just a nice clarification of that process. The zoning code tax amendment did require us to change some definitions of director, department, and city manager. We use those phrases in the code, we just want to make sure they're clearly defined. So that is a summary of those changes. The planning commission did vote unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council to adopt this zoning code amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? I don't see any questions, Paul.
Okay.
All right, this is a public hearing, this is L5, so if there's anybody, I will open the floor. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on L5, this is your opportunity. Okay, seeing no one jump up, then I'm going to close the public hearing and I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1397.17.64. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending chapters 17.12 and 17.68 of Title 17 zoning relating to the definitions and rezoning procedures, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 1397.17.64 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Last item on our agenda, actually, the last two items. We have the special reports, so I'm going to start with you, Bob.
No report, Mayor.
All right, Lisa?
You know, Mayor, I wanted to bring this up the last couple of meetings, but just to recognize what's been going on with the police department and the LDS church with the graffiti abatement and the homeless cleanups. I know the missionaries have been out there and worked on the homeless encampments, cleaning them up, and also doing graffiti, so just thank you for that, and I know they're continuing, and I think there's another project coming up soon, and I know Wendy's coordinating. So I just wanted to bring that up of everything that they've been doing to clean up the encampments and all the graffiti that's been an issue here. Thank you for the boards and commission dinner, for all of those that volunteer on our boards. It was a great dinner, we haven't had it in a few years. So it was nice, again, to just show appreciation for all the people that have dedicated so much time and volunteering on the boards and commissions. There's a lot's been going on, I've been following this guy around here for a few weeks and trying to keep up, but, you know, just, you know, thank you, Mayor, for everything, you know, getting, you know, with everything with the transition and also with Larry and the staff, with the new council members. You know, the next meeting is going to be a little switch-up going here, but thank you to staff for taking the time to, you know, go over with our new council members just what's going on in the department, things that they need to look forward to, things that are coming up on the future agendas, and just a training. So I know there's going to be a lot, you know, going on, but just thank you to everyone for the patience. It's me, too, running the meetings, I'll have to get used to that. So, but yeah, no, just, you know, so many other things going on, but happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and that's it for me.
All right.
No reports. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, I'll be out of town.
We'll miss you.
Thanks, Mayor. Happy to report the youth commission started construction of their float for the light parade early this year. Again, thanks to Holly Ricosi Nash and her leadership there, so I'm very excited, we're not doing it the day of. The fire station is looking great with the big red panels and doors. I really like how that looks with the red, it's going to be a great building. This Wednesday is the Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours, where they're going to announce the greatest of the grandy winners, and that's at 5:15 at the Neon Sign Park. The neat thing about our community is just the people, and I hike at CG Mountain from time to time, and the other morning we were there and they see this light up there, and someone put a 10-foot-tall wooden cross on part of the mountain up there. It's really like, it was not easy to get, I hiked over to it yesterday, and I don't know how they got it up there, but it's really cool, so. Do you want to see something cool? It's pretty neat. Hack them out. Lot of stuff to see up there. And I just have to add, this is a personal privilege, got a big game for ASU this weekend, so go Devils.
Matt mentioned the parade, which is December 7. Danny, I know that your staff is gearing up for that, and you guys do such a good job, and I'm looking forward to announcing downtown again and seeing the youth commission. And I also wanted to do just a kudos to Judge Juarez. Today, her office hosted a group of homeschool, high school students that did a mock trout competition, and we were there all morning, and it was really great to let those kids see what really happens in a courtroom. And of course, William O'Neil and Chris O'Neil both were helping, so that was an added pleasure to be there, so that's it.
Well, on October 29th, we had our Chamber of Commerce Bowl with Vista and Union's flag football teams, and we had to suspend the ceremony because one of our athletes was injured, and we wanted to make sure that she was okay before we did any kind of celebration. So last Thursday night, our mayor-elect came and presented the trophy to Union on their victory, and we had also students there from Vista and our Union alumni, Bob, Anthony, and Matt, you'll be happy to know that Lisa wore a blue blazer and did an excellent job talking about, you know, flag football is a new sport here at our community, we're really seeing the advancement and opportunities for women. We talked about Lisa being our first mayor since 1929 and our first Latina mayor, so we're just excited for the opportunities. Also, our Pride Casa Grande band that finished, won the state championship last year, finished second this year, so the tradition is continuing. A few weeks ago, many council members went to the Abel Ramos event, that our newly-elected Congressman Siskomani, re-elected Congressman Siskomani hosted, and Abel almost shocked the world. He was a 7-1 underdog and finished in a draw, so I think one of the judges needs to be disbarred, because I don't know how he could have that score that disproportionate. But we're real proud of Abel and how he represented this community, and we're really hoping that he gets an opportunity for a rematch. Also, we're proud of our Cougars and Vista boys football teams, they qualified for state, they both were eliminated on Friday night, but the Casa Grande Union girls team won their quarterfinal game on Saturday at Verrado High School. For those that don't know Verrado, I always say it's the last exit before LA leaving Phoenix, 80 miles, and we actually had a bigger crowd supporting Union at that game than we did than Verrado had for their own home team. And Anthony, you might have appreciated the game, the play that broke it open, it was the Larry Fitzgerald, got down the middle, the safety bites, and they go to the house, Kayla went 75 yards, Larry only went 64. But unlike your Cardinals, our defense is stifling and wouldn't let Verrado score. So they play Wednesday night against the number-one ranked team in the state, Mountain Point, in the state semifinals. If they win, then they'll play for the state championship on Saturday. They're a fun group of ladies to watch play, and I encourage the community to go travel to Mountain Point on Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, and support this team. I think that's everything.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Just a couple of things, I had the opportunity to be at Vista today, Vista High School, and was with a class of about, was it 6, 18, 20, 20 young people, where they were actually talking about our constitution, talking about the Magna Carta, talking about, you know, they had these questions that they had to answer, and bring in real-life cases so they could explain, you know, what they were talking about and how they would justify what they were working on. And Jason Shear is their teacher, and he's very inspiring. I had a good time, I was with Nick from Fitzgibbons Law, and the two of us were the panel, and we critiqued each of their presentations. Went quick, we literally had six groups, six units, and three to four in each one, but I was impressed with these young people. So I think our future's bright, in their hands, so I'm excited about it and excited to see what they can do. Don't forget to sign up for the Deck the House, signup is due December 2nd, so if you're interested in decorating your house up and seeing it on a map, and want people to come by and see all the hard work that you've done for your holiday lights, then go online, you can sign up. You have to be signed up by December 2nd. The actual parade or the Deck the House starts on the 16th, so December 16th is when the voting opens and the map is available, and you can literally pull the map out virtually from the website. So don't forget to do that. We've got Safeway's grand reopening this Wednesday at 9 o'clock, so they went through a total remodel in the Safeway store, so I'm excited to see it, I haven't been in there since they finished. Lisa and I were at ASU's Economic Forecast Luncheon last week, it was very interesting, very informative, and, yeah, and I went up to Prescott to look at some teacher housing that were, actually is built on school grounds. So Prescott has some, as does Chino Valley. So we went and looked at both of them. The Chino Valley, they're literally 500 square feet. The other ones at Prescott were a little bigger, they were two bedrooms, so, but interesting idea, owned by the school, right? The school owns it, and then they rent. I mean, the Chino Valley rent was $500 a month. I mean, for a teacher, yeah, especially some of the teachers that we're bringing in from the Philippines, and it's their own room, they get their own space. Small, but they get their own space. And the other ones, I think they were about $1,200 for the two-bedroom, but considering that in Prescott, their median household is like $700,000 to buy a house in Prescott. So $1,200 sounds cheap compared to $700,000.
Sure.
Well, we are hoping the grant that Congressman Siskomani, the $1.8 million, comes through before the change of administration, so.
Yeah, and I was up there with Adam, so we took some pictures, and he's got some good notes, and we took his facilities people up there, and I think they're going to be working with you on that project, so, yeah, that's why I went. It was, again, affordable housing, working on lots of different ideas, different ways to try and approach it, so. Thank you, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and we'll call the meeting adjourned.